I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 28th, 2023 to order. Thank you for coming. This time we'll have a moment of silence to think about whatever it is you are interested Thank you. If everyone please stand and join Alderman Jobchin in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Mr. Cupp, if you'd please call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon? Cornet?
Here.
Dickman? Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. Please remember the meetings are recorded and available for viewing later. We're happy you're participating in your study of government, and as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially again for the folks in here. If you put your cellphone, please, on silent or turn it off, simply it doesn't get in the way of people talking. If you want to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please keep your remarks to three minutes. I know everybody will observe the common accepted rules of dignity, decorum, and good taste. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Please address the council as a body and not as any individual or name. Thank you. Will an Alderman please move approval of the City Council minutes for June 14th, 2023? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, any update for tonight?
Just a quick reminder, and I'm sure Alderman McGinnis might go into more detail, but Red, White, and Boom will be held on our riverfront Monday evening, starting at 5:00, and then city offices will be closed Tuesday in observation of the holiday.
Thank you. Okay, will an Alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Hall for June 21st, 2023?
Move the report.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two appointments and one proclamation. The two appointments are Ashel Sharif, the Second Ward is a new appointment, and Andrew Dasso, At Large, new appointment. I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you for serving. We continue to look for folks that want to serve on our Board of the Commission, so we appreciate these two folks. Proclamation, Red, White, and Boom Military and Arsenal Appreciation Day, July 3rd. I'll read. City of Davenport proclamation, whereas the cities of Rock Island and Davenport have been cooperative neighbors since the founding of each community in 1835 and 1836 respectively, and whereas there exists a long history of collaboration dating back to the 1850s when the two communities were connected by the first railroad bridge across the Mississippi, and whereas Red, White, and Boom is celebrating its 19th anniversary of cooperation between these two communities, and whereas River Vision is a cooperative plan for the redevelopment of the riverfront between the two cities, and whereas the execution of said plan has brought continuous improvements and enhanced the quality of life along both riverfronts, and whereas we honor the birth of our nation, those who gave all for our great country, and those who serve today to protect our shores, and whereas Arsenal Island and the military commands located there have been a significant part of the history of both communities, and whereas our communities commemorate the Rock Island Arsenal and the arsenal's important to our region and nation, now therefore we, Mike Mattson, Mayor and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim July 3rd, 2023, as Red, White, and Boom Military and Arsenal Appreciation Day, and congratulate the cities of Davenport and Rock Island for their improvements to the riverfront, but also to the Rock Island Arsenal on all of its past achievements and innovations and future successes. I'll accept a motion to approve. Motion and second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And thank you. I'll meet Bill Cheertrill at the podium to accept.
Commissioner, thank you very much for your service.
Well, I'm very honored and humbled to represent such a distinguished group of veterans, those that have served in the past, as a Vietnam veteran myself, and the people that are serving right now. This is a wonderful thing that the city of Davenport is doing, and we appreciate that very much. I look forward to celebrating another wonderful Red, White, and Boom, and I'm sure we'll all be there and make it a great, great day for the city of Davenport and Rock Island. So thank you very much. We appreciate this.
Thank you.
Okay, next is petitions and communications, anyone? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully not stealing Alderwoman McGinnis' thunder here, but with the Fourth of July coming up, I want to remind people that there are times for legal discharge of fireworks on the Third and Fourth, so I just ask everybody within the city of Davenport to be good, considerate neighbors. Make sure that you're adhering to those times. Also afterwards, please make sure you're picking up your litter. Don't leave it around to kind of break down neighborhoods and those types of things. And then lastly, with that, I know we've gotten a little rain over the past couple of days, but it still dries a bone out there, so be safe and don't have Fire Marshal Morris back there having to do a little extra work because of people not doing things the way they should. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just do want to remind everybody about Red, White, and Boom. This is a Quad Cities celebration. There are three main viewing areas, which is Leclerc Park and Modern Woodman Park, and then Shweber Riverfront Park in Rock Island. So it's going to be another great event. You can tune in. It starts at 9:30. Then there's lots of events happening before. You can tune in to 97X, and there's a soundtrack that follows the fireworks, so some great viewing places all across the cities, but something that we can enjoy again this year. I also wanted to recognize an event that took place on Monday night in the Central Community Circle, which is a little area, small neighborhood that is just east of Marquette and Vine, around the Fifth and Sixth Streets. It is a neighborhood that certainly has had a lot of challenges, but has wonderful neighbors. And on Monday night, they have a wonderful little park there at 510 Warren. It's a neighborhood park, and there were four women leaders who were recognized, long-term women who live there or have lived there. Many have passed. Lupe Serrano, who was one of the neighbors, told me, she passed a couple of years ago, that she was one of the first Hispanic families in the neighborhood and was welcomed and made her home there and raised her children there. So the women who were recognized, and it was a very strong humility, Mary has probably a great role in that neighborhood in working with the neighborhood and has done that and has lived in the neighborhood, members of that community for years. So the women honored were Lupe Serrano, Janet Reyes, Florence Below, and Sister Marilyn Shrebrock. And if you want to go and spend a moment in their garden, their bench is there. It's a beautiful garden. It's a community garden, and just to remember this really great neighborhood that works very hard to make it welcoming for everyone. So I really enjoyed that on Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I saw a wonderful vet sign, veterinarian, that said, "I love fireworks," said no pet ever. So I'd just like to reinforce what Alderman Jobchin said. It's only between 5:00 and 10:00 o'clock on the Third and the Fourth, and I think there'd be a lot of people who would be happy if everyone stops at 10:00 for that. I'd also like to remind people that we're in a very high air quality problem area. There's no place in the country that's the extreme, but we are right up against that here in the Quad Cities area. Looked at a map today. So please be careful, it's driving my sinus as crazy. So yeah, just please be careful with that. Don't be outside or running or something if you don't have to be until it clears up. And that's from the climate crisis and the fires up in Canada. And the third one is, I don't know if you know, but we had a train derailment last night over at Nahant. 21 cars derailed, and CP said they worked through the night to try to get it up. They haven't completely gotten them up yet, but I don't know, but Nahant wasn't advised. It was right at their land, Nahant Marsh. It was right at their land, and some of the cars had asphalt. As far as we know, there's been no spills, but Nahant is doing some testing of the water. And I know the fire department's been down there. And I guess I have a question. Was anyone in the city notified by CP that this derailment occurred sometime during the night last night? Because it wasn't found until Nahant found it during the day, today. Was anyone?
You want me to? Go ahead. We'll look into that.
And you'll let me know? You'll let us know?
Well, I'll let you know. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please. So I'll just say on behalf of me, I was notified immediately, and I was in contact with CP, the fire department, and everybody, and the hazmat team was there. Anything else, Alderwoman Lee?
No, thank you.
Yeah, Alderman Dunn.
I just want to say as the Alderman of that ward, I was notified. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to individual items on the discussion agenda. The first item is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.34 entitled Department of Public Works and Section 2.30 entitled City Administrator, additional duties of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to state again the existing ability to align operational areas with organizational resources and needs. Is there any public with comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Sidran. I live at 1502 Clay Street. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but the city administrator has failed to take responsibility for this fiasco, nor has the city, to my knowledge, given her any responsibility and made her take responsibility. I understand.
Personal tax, please.
I understand.
Thank you.
But this is a position that the citizens of Davenport, she has enough plates in the air right now. She doesn't need more responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, will an Alderman please move consideration of the order? Motion and a second. Any, Miss Lee? Yes, I know how to run a meeting. Any discussion from the Alderman?
That was rude.
Please, folks.
You're being rude.
Please, folks. Alderwoman Lee.
I apologize. It was my mistake. When I saw in the wording to state again the existing ability to align operational areas with organizational resources and needs, I finally took the time, and I apologize for not doing it earlier, to go back to the two city ordinances that are referred here and compare it to what we had at 2.30.060 under City Administrator. And I don't really see why we have a need for doing this, because it's just restating what we already have. So I'm going to vote no on this, because I don't see the need to glum up the code if we don't need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Brian, please call the roll on third consideration. McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Looks like seven yeses and two no's, Your Honor. Very good. The ordinance is adopted. The next issue is number two, resolution amending the FY 2023 operating budget. Is there any public with comment?
Yes, I would. My name is David Ezra Sidran. I've been a resident of the Third Ward for 30-plus years. We are now in fiscal 2024, and we are now going back in time to fiscal 2023 to change a budget, to come up with money, millions of dollars, to fund the contracts that you didn't want us to see that we now see. I would like to talk about the first contract, which is with a company called White Birch
Will an Alderman move the resolution?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Alderwoman Lee?
I do have some questions that relate to this. The amendment of the budget is based on the operating emergency per City Code 2.12.140 Parts B and as relevant C and D, which says, and all of this is covered under this amendment, because I talked to the financial, the CFO. The finance director may purchase or authorize for purchase of service and other things that could not reasonably be reasonably foreseen or anticipated if the amount is not in excess of $100,000 without advertisement. However, and I quote from the code here, "A full written account with requisition for the service shall be open for public inspection for at least one year after the date of the emergency purchases. Any single expenditure of $100,000 or more shall be submitted to City Council for ratification, which is allowed to be after the fact under Part D." So it's not given to us for approval, it's for ratification. So I've got a couple of questions on the emergency, the operating emergency under which these contracts were let and that will be covered by this budget amendment. So how is the city defining operating emergency? And now that the building is demolished and almost entirely deposited landfill, at what point, using what factors, are these actions and services related to the building collapse no longer going to be considered operating emergency, subject to the $100,000 limit, with just ratification and not the $50,000 for City Council approval? And with the building demolished and the safety concern done, would all further purchases and billing now be subject to the $50,000 limit as it relates to City Council approval?
So who would like to take? There's a couple of questions in there, so.
Yeah.
First off, Your Honor, I think we covered operating emergencies at the last meeting, and we talked about what they were, why we were doing it, gave some examples of them. Certainly a building collapse in the downtown would be an unanticipated emergency situation causing an operating emergency. We had to act right away. And as far as, when does the emergency end? The emergency will end when we get the site in the condition that we contracted to get it into. As far as items running through the normal course, you will already see some items that will be running through the normal course next cycle.
Okay, so that was my question. At what point does it end? I wasn't arguing about making them in the first place. That wasn't my point. So the other question I had was the full written account with requisitions for services that's in the code. So all we got was the table that was the background. And I do understand, you know, watching the news, that there was an $18,000 bill from an unnamed firm for crisis communication and reputation management, landfill tipping fees, shy battery, $250,000 for recovery and demolition, and that was reported yesterday. So I'm just wondering why we haven't also been provided those requisitions.
I can't go back right now and audit it. I'm sure a lot of this information has already been provided to you. As far as the $18,000 item, as you're aware, purchases between $10,000 and $50,000 during the normal course of the city's business are only reported as information-only items.
Okay, that explains that. You're right. I understand the $18,000. I just hadn't heard about it. And then the, I'm not going to go into the other questions that I provided to you about the contracts, because I understand our job is just for ratification, and we don't have the approval authority under the operating emergency per City Code. But I did review those contracts with some detail, all three of them. The White Birch Group, the, what was the other one? SIE as well as Zinser, and I was surprised at some of the contracting clauses or lack of clauses that were approved by the city manager. There are things, okay, but that's who signed them.
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we can get her answers, because she provided them in writing just a couple hours ago.
Because I just got the contract.
So I get that.
Yeah.
So we'll get her those answers, but please.
Thank you. I was going to say we're getting into the germaneness problem again. The budget amendment is to provide capacity and legal spending authority for this. It's not about any specific item that went through. I will say, as far as these contracts are concerned, particularly the demolition Phase One and Phase Two contracts, I worked closely with the city engineer, who worked closely with the demolition contractor. We fully understand the scope of these services, and I told the city administrator that it was okay to sign them. So to say that she made that choice would be incorrect.
Okay, thank you. Others, anything else, Alderwomen Lee?
Nope, I'm good.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you. Alderman Dunn, do you have a comment? You're late. Okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay, Brian, please call the roll. Cornet?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. The resolution is adopted. The next item, number three, is a motion approving the appeal to overturn the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny case COA 23-18, a request to install vinyl windows at the J. Monroe Parker Figgy House located at 1208 Main Street, a locally designated historic landmark within the College Square Historic District, on behalf of Delt 100 alumni. Just so the council knows, a yes vote overturns Historic Preservation Commission decision, and no vote upholds their decision. Is there any public with comment?
Hello, I'm Sarah Oberg Ramirez with Landon Waterman, appearing on behalf of the homeowners. I'd like to just quickly address some of the council's reservations from last week's meeting, or the meeting two weeks ago, rather. First, Alderwoman McGinnis stated that economic hardship isn't a factor that this council should consider in deciding whether to overturn the commission's denial. I respectfully disagree with Alderwoman McGinnis on this point. One of the two factors this council must consider is whether the commission followed Davenport City ordinance in coming to its decision, and Davenport City ordinance mandates that the commission must take economic feasibility into full consideration. Because of that, whether the commission adequately considered economic feasibility and how economic feasibility impacts the reasonableness of the project are both critical questions for this council to consider. Second, Development and Neighborhood Services said they didn't have enough pertinent information to approve the homeowners' project. I would just like to clarify the record here a bit. To be clear, the homeowners did submit a window survey. The homeowners hired contractor Casey Haas, who prepared a schedule containing a list of each window in the home, the window's dimensions, and their locations. Mr. Haas then took photos of the home's exterior with each window labeled in coordination with the schedule. Now, staff feels the photos were taken from too far away, so there is disagreement as to the survey, but the homeowners did make a good faith effort to respond to all of staff's information requests. The homeowners declined to provide closer range photos because they hired a professional contractor, Mr. Haas, who has repeatedly opined that the extent of the window's deterioration disqualifies restoration as a viable option. Even if restoration were a viable option, we again encounter the issue of economic feasibility of restoration. Now, there was some feedback last week that the homeowners bear responsibility for upholding the home's historical significance and that they need to come to the table as good community partners. Respectfully, counsel, the homeowners have come to the table. They have a history of compliance with the Historic Preservation Commission's process. In 2021, the commission granted two applications from these homeowners, and this year, very recently, the commission granted another application for roof replacement. The homeowners have submitted applications, they have provided supporting documentation, and they've retained people like myself and Mr. Haas to assist with staff questions wherever needed and to be present at these meetings to discuss the project with you. Now, yes, they have disagreed with staff on occasion, and yes, they do disagree with the commission's determination in this case, but that doesn't mean they haven't come to the table as good community partners. So with that said, the homeowners ask this council to vote yes to their appeal to overturn the commission's denial tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Bob McGivern. I'm a resident of Davenport and a member of the Seventh Ward. I am also the Chair of Historic Preservation, and I believe this is the first time in eight years Historic Preservation has been before the council on a rejection of an application. As long as I've been involved with Historic Preservation, our philosophy was going to be, this is not your mom and dad's Historic Preservation Commission. We are going to be advocates for the homeowner and the public to improve properties and neighborhoods with the processes that are at hand. When the homeowners came through about, I believe, almost a year and a half ago, indicating that they're going to start working on this historic property, this icon of Davenport, where we have so many prints of the photo and so many basements in Davenport, we wanted to make sure that every resource was available. And as the council from Landon Waterman had indicated, we have had several successful applications. We've worked with the ownership group, with the brick and mortar, to make sure that the mortar analysis, they were very willing to have their subcontractors come down and work. When it came to the porch and the columns, we worked with the homeowners and the commission in work sessions to make sure that every resource was available to them so they could be successful and the right thing done. When it came to the windows, they decided that they didn't want to continue this type of cooperation, and I'm sorry for that. And I hope that with your no vote tonight, they'll come back to the commission and we will work together. And I want to let you know what we, as your commission, have done. When it came to the windows, we called Des Moines and asked Shipa to come down and educate not only the commission but the public on windows and how they work with Historic Preservation. And I will tell you that many years ago, I was not a Historic Preservation person. I'm a convert, so to speak. When I was on the council, I could have cared less about vinyl windows or anything else. But then I saw outside investors come from Wisconsin and other parts of the country into our eastern part of downtown and utilize these tax credits to redevelop the downtown as we know it today. Properties and ownership groups that successfully embraced these tools of economic redevelopment have been successful and so have their properties. What we are asking to do is to follow the process. These resources that Historic Preservation allow come from Des Moines and the federal government. I had a project that I got a little over my head on after I was done with city government, and we decided we had to do, it was my first Historic Preservation Project, and I learned firsthand the true economic benefit. A little bit more time, a little bit more money, but the credits offset so much of that. So what I will share with you in my observations over time.
Thank you, Mr. McGivern.
Yep. Is you could be pro-development and ask development to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, will an alderman move the motion? Motion second, any discussion from alderfolks? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight, I'll try to be short. I do want to, again, thank the owners of the Parker Figgie House for their past care of this important historic property and the HPC for their ongoing service to the city and historic properties under their purview. But tonight, I wanted to make a couple of further points regarding the appeal. There has been an inference that the HPC did not consider hardship or financial feasibility or, or other options in its decision, and I want to point out some, some details here within the preservation ordinance. Economic hardship, which is defined specifically in the ordinance, is only a factor when an applicant requests to demolish a property, and in that scenario, only a certificate of economic hardship is what is granted, and that's the legal tool that, that allows them to proceed to demolition. So that term economic hardship is only when someone's coming and asking, can we demolish this project? Demolition was, of course, not sought in this, in this instance. So economic hardship is not a factor that must be considered by the HPC for what the applicant sought, which was, and what the applicant was asking for was a certificate of appropriateness or a COA to replace wooden windows with vinyl. Now, the COA process does not mention, does mention economic feasibility as a consideration, not economic hardship. And in this case, there was an option for the applicant to pursue other funding to help offset costs, and that would have been the historic tax credits that were mentioned. And, and the applicant was informed of this past, and it's up to the applicant to decide whether they choose to pursue any suggestions like that, and the city would never say you have to do this. But the choice not to pursue such alternatives does not require the HPC to consider more heavily economic feasibility. So again, just to remind our council that our decision tonight is based on two factors, whether the commission has exercised its powers and followed the guidelines established by law and ordinance, and whether the commission's actions were patently arbitrary and capricious. I believe the HPC and staff were both very helpful in this case. They spent a lot of time working with it, with the applicant, and following their ordinance guidelines as well, and their actions were not arbitrary and they were not capricious. So a vote no to the motion before us supports our HPC decision, and that was unanimous, and a vote yes overturns a unanimous decision of this group that works very hard for the city. I urge my fellow aldermen to support the HPC with a no vote tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I drove past the, the building after the meeting last night, or last week, and it's, it's quite a beautiful building. It's looking a little weary. There's air conditioners hanging out a bunch of the windows. I guess my question would be for the commissioner, since he's here, and I appreciate him coming to speak tonight. Could, could he come up to the?
If you ask.
Yeah, would, would you please come up and let me just ask a quick question? You indicate that the, the question about the window, everything was cooperative except about the windows, and that surprised you with the owner, owners. If indeed we support your decision, is there the opportunity for you and him to get back together and try to work more cooperatively?
So as the process unfolds, and what we would encourage is to have a true, have them obtain a little outside professional help and do a real window survey, not what, they took some pictures and, you know, numbered where the windows were, but the window survey identifies the problem, or if there's a problem, or to the degree of the problem. Historic Preservation would rather some windows, if they can be restored, if they're gone through deterioration, then there may be other alternatives. But you have to define and understand the problem, which is the purpose of the true window survey. So it would be our hope that they would come back and find some outside expertise and do a true window survey. And from there, I think that will lead them on the path of what they're reluctant to do, and, and that's their own decision, but the historic tax credits are an immense opportunity to give this building another 30 to 50 years. I know that's what the outcome on my building, on Central Park and, and Harrison, so I hope that answers your question.
Would, um, let me ask a question. Would it be helpful to table this for another cycle, for you to try to work with him, or?
That's beyond my.
Yeah, that's, that's, you can ask your colleagues if you want.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking, to give them a chance to do the survey and, I'm sorry, thank you very much, to do the survey and, and work together?
So that's up to your colleague, when they get the floor, if they want to respond to you. So it's your floor now, so you ask, and then they'll go to others.
Let, let's do a vote on a table, and that'll.
Your Honor.
Okay, so I, I understand. Yep. Ms. Lee, if you want to make a motion on something, that's your choice.
Yeah.
But it's, this, right now is your choice to make your comments to your colleagues, and then they have their choice to make their comments.
Okay, let, let's throw that thought out there.
Your Honor.
Mr. Warner, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. There are time deadlines that, by which the council has to act, and if you do not follow those time deadlines and you continue it without the permission of the applicant, the applicant can win by just the passage of time, so I would caution you.
Thank you. Are you good, Ms. Lee?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I did, I did just want to speak briefly to the criteria that we're basing our decision on today, whether the commission's exercised its power by following the guidelines established by law and ordinance. I think that they have. I think they are acting within the powers that have been given to them by the city of Davenport, and then whether the commission's actions were patently arbitrary and capricious or random, impulsive, unpredictable, and I don't think they are. I think the, uh, HPC's been pretty consistent in the way they handle these things, and I think they are, they are acting as they should, and so the answer to my, to my, to those questions lead me to say that I'm going to vote no and uphold the HPC's decision. I do want to say, whether it's overturned or not, I hope that the Delt 100 alumni will continue to recognize the historic significance of that building and also view the city of Davenport as a partner and maintaining the integrity, the historical integrity and the integrity of that property. I'm happy to, to work with you to see that through and be a partner, although I did just hear the HPC offered the same thing, and they're much more qualified to do it than I am. But if you want an opportunity to see how we can work together to get this done, I'm happy to, to try to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question for our corporate counsel, Mr. Warner. What is that timeline? So how long, how long before, if we take no action, that their appeal would be a winner?
I don't have the code in front of me, but I believe it's 60 days, so.
Do we know where we are in this process?
No, that's why I'm cautioning you against that, and I think the critical point tonight is the standard of review as to whether it was arbitrary and capricious, the action of the commission.
Sounds good. Thank you. And, you know, my inclination is to vote no. We've taken the stance on a couple other items where, where an appeal has come to us, where we've said, hey, you know, maybe we can table it for a, a period of time. It doesn't sound like that's as viable as maybe some of those other situations. I'm not going to make that motion. I don't think I'll second it either. I would just rather vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Anyone else? Okay, Brian, please call the roll for the motion. Again, just before you call the roll, reminding council, if you vote yes, it overturns the Historic Preservation Commission decision, and no vote upholds the Historic Preservation Commission decision. Brian? Condon?
No.
Gripp?
No.
Ortiz?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Lee?
No.
Cornet?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Jobchin?
No.
And Kelly?
No.
So that is nine no's, Your Honor. Right, so the motion does not pass, okay? The next area, is there any motion, is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent? We'll take a motion in a second, and then I know an alderperson would like to bring one off for a comment.
Is the consent agenda?
Okay, and I know Alderwoman Lee, you'd like to take one off to talk about and then put it back on, please.
Thank you, it's number 19. And I just have a question on that. In the public letters from Governor Reynolds to the Honorable Joe Biden dated June 6th and June 20th, I, I just need to understand, so this is a question for corporate counsel. I just need to understand what the phrase, it says, "The city of Davenport has exercised its dangerous building ordinance condemnation procedures." Then it says, "To take possession of the structure with the intention of demolition." Could you please define for me what "take possession of the structure" means legally in terms of our liability and our costs?
In this, in this instance, it means get control of the site in order to tear it down. Our end game, if you will, even if we get aid from the federal government to do this, is always to go after the property owner.
That's what I was wondering. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm happy.
So back on. Okay, all right, so anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent. Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Cornet?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Consent's approved. Next areas are the ordinances, resolutions, or motions. There are none for tonight.[1297.91]